All right, it's great to see everyone here this evening. Thanks for coming. It is five thirty PM on Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three, and this regular meeting in the Sandpoint City Council is now called order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are Councilors Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groat, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Kate McAllister is absent this evening. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. First, this evening, we have employee recognition in both the Fire Department and the Police Department. At this time, I'd like to call the Fire Chief Gavin Gilchrist to the podium, please.
Hey, your counsel, is everybody doing this evening?
Yeah, thanks.
So we're here tonight for another pending ceremony. We did one of these late last year. There are two promotions again that stand out most in the fire service. One is when you actually make officer, you're promoted to the rank of fire officer, and the other one is when you promote from off of probation and into full-fledged firefighter hood, as we call it. Um, so tonight we celebrate one of our probationary firefighters making that transition, and that'll be firefighter Blake Beard. When a candidate comes aboard, they must complete several steps in order to be promoted out of probationary status. Prior to being assigned to a shift, they are here five days a week completing recruit training. These are basic skills that they will need to move on and on to, sorry, the second phase of training. Once they have successfully navigated this four to six-week process, they are assigned to their shift, and this is where they complete phase two of their recruit training. For the remainder of their first year in the department, they will be assigned to different stations and must complete a skills task manual with a wide variety of evolutions. These include firefighting, rope rescue, apparatus operation, and marine response, just to name a few. They must also remain on probation for their first year, even if their task manual has been completed. So it's a time and temperature thing. Where's my pages stick together? Sorry about that. It's a constant struggle with me. There we go. Again, it's a time-consuming process, but it takes approximately that amount of time, that one year to accomplish it in full. So with a year under his belt and a completed task manual and is validated by the training officer, a request had been made by his officer to have firefighter Blake Beard promoted to the rank of engineer. This request had been approved, and I asked that firefighter Beard come to the podium for penning of his badge. It is customary for the firefighter to that is going to be pinned to be pinned by someone of their choosing, and at this time Blake Beard or firefighter Beard will be pinned tonight by his wife Emily and their son Miller. It's extra points if you stick them. Engineer Beer, we wish you well and the best as you move forward in your fire service career. Stay safe in the discharge of your duties and the protection of our community.
I now call Police Chief Corey Kuhn to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've challenged our staff to step up our training and our education, and so tonight we'd like to recognize three of our officers, or two of our officers and Angela. But I'm going to turn it over to their supervisors to do that for us. So up first will be Captain Bailey, then after Captain Bailey, Lieutenant Chamberlain, and then Sergeant Ziegler will last. Tag your.
Good evening, guys. This achievement certificate is for Angela Tennyson. Angela's one of our community resource officers. As y'all probably already know, that Angela and her team, they handle animal enforcement, parking enforcement, code enforcement, they help out all the other departments in our city, do a great job. Angela's hired in November of two thousand seventeen, and she has been a busy person for the last five years. Her certificate, this, for this, this, the certificate here is for a certified master animal cruelty investigator. Angela successfully attended and completed the required essentials, animal services, training academies, modules A, B, and C, and equine, aka horse investigations, academy levels one and two, through the Code Three Associates in the Colorado State University to earn the title of Certified Master Animal Cruelty Investigator. This is especially a great achievement on Angela's part, considering there's only eight other individuals in the United States actually have achieved this accomplishment. We're with that, present Angela Wither forward. Thank you.
Angela, I want to thank you too. You've also rescued my dog at least a couple of times. He's a master escape artist from the house, so.
Good evening. I feel privileged to be able to introduce Zach Fisher. Zach has been with the Police Department initially as a reserve capacity since March of two thousand seventeen, so he's just about to hit his six-year mark with the Police Department. He reserved for us for about six months. We realized kind of like him, so we hired him on full-time. And we've liked him ever since. He's done a lot with the department. One of his biggest achievements he's done is he's a drug recognition expert, which is arguably the hardest class to attend and successfully complete in law enforcement. Most classes, you know, you go to your forty hours, you get your forty-hour certificate. There's an incredible amount of training that goes into being a DRE and a proficiency. It's not just, here you are, you attended, good for you. You actually have to be very, very accurate in what you do. It's very, very technical. So part of that is his training is what he has to do to become an intermediate police officer. So along our journey, we start with the basic police officer. You attend the academy, complete a field training program, and then the next step is the intermediate police officer. It basically shows, hey, you've got advanced training and or some college, which Zach actually has a significant amount of both. He's got college and he's almost a thousand hours of training through the post academy. So with that, he was actually applied for and granted an intermediate certificate as a police officer. So that's what we're recognizing him with today. Congratulations.
Good evening. Today I would like to present Corporal Hagstrom. He's been with our department for approximately fifteen years. Thirteen of those years, approximately, he's been training our officers as a field training officer. He's currently a shift supervisor. Recently, he's attended training to be an instructor in the state of Idaho and has taken further instruction to be a high liability instructor and currently instructs defensive tactics for our department. So congratulations.
I have the best staff, mainly because they tolerate me. With that being said, we have one more to do and more of an introduction than anything else. Jacob Wright. If Jacob could stand up, come up really quick. We just want to put a face to a name, one of our new hires that we've hired. Jacob comes from us from that great state of Southern Idaho, California. But we're excited to have him. He's been hired on. He's been with us for less than a month. Is it a month now? About a month with us. He's in with Angela within our community resource division. He's been learning the ropes. He came, it wasn't, I was gonna say fishing game, but it's park rangers. So he comes up out of the park ranger, so he's got a great knowledge of dealing with parks. A lot of the same stuff that we're doing here, he's been part of. So we're excited to have him. We're excited to be part of the team. He's fitting in. Well, he's also tolerating us, which is a, which is a plus. So we just wanted to introduce you, say thank you, and go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So on behalf of Council, Council President McAllister, she apologized for not being here, but she wanted to make sure that all of our uniformed officers knew how much she appreciates, recognizes, and is encouraged by all these promotions. She wanted to specifically let Angela know that you are one of our community's unsung heroes. And I'll speak on behalf for her and myself. You're one of our favorite humans. Like what it is that you do out there and what you see is difficult and the, your ability to remain positive is we could all be better because of you. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you guys. You guys are all amazing. Angela, good job.
All right, staff, any further announcements?
Just an update and recognition for actually some of our council members quickly tonight while we're on the theme of, of training. Wanted to note for the council and the public, we had several training sessions yesterday here in council chambers and had retired police officers who is now working with ICRIM, our risk management insurance pool provider, come up and do a training on mental health, conflict resolution, and de-escalation. And generally, those trainings are geared towards law enforcement, but we opened it up citywide. And really, I credit Chief Kuhn for suggesting that we should consider this across the city. So we had several sessions yesterday and we had our employees, every department across the city participate in the training and several council members came in for the training as well. And so thank you for joining us, and we appreciate you getting an opportunity to learn a little bit about what our staff are learning about and participating with us. But I would also note with this, we are the first city in the state to have done this training across the entire city. So we continue on the path with prioritizing strategic priorities of council with education of our staff and investing in both professional opportunities that help their development as well as just professional opportunities that improve our ability to respond and serve the public of Sandpoint. So just wanted to note that for council.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick announcement. This Saturday, February fourth, Bonner General Health Foundation will be holding its fifteenth annual heart ball. It is our first gala back in person after two very long and successful years of going virtual here. This year's mission, we are raising funds for a new mammography machine. Right now, we have over twelve hundred orders or on back order right now. We need to get this thing in this community as soon as possible. I think everybody in this room has been affected by breast cancer in some form or some fashion here. This machine has the ability to create, create immediate impact in our community. We were sold out within minutes of opening up our invite list right now, and we appreciate this community for doing so. You can still be part of our story, though, by coming to www.bonnergeneral.org backslash foundation to still make a financial contribution to the mammography machine. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Counsel, any further announcements? All right. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address myself and counsel regarding items either listed on the consent calendar or on items not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. And if you did not have an opportunity to speak during that time, but you would like to, that we will reopen the public forum at the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form, which is available on the table by the front door. Please fill it out and hand it to the clerk up here at the front right. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, I will ask for public comment, and at that time you will raise your hand and the clerk will unmute you. Please note that during the public forum portion of the meeting, council may not hear or take testimony on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is likely to be before the city or is likely to be an application before the city. Such testimony is only allowed during the, during the public hearing for that item that'll be on the regularly scheduled agenda. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public forum portion of meeting. Matters that have been previously decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate as well. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during the meeting are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to council or to myself. And please do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front table as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff at the back of the table. We have a staff table back there. If you have a question or need assistance, you can ask the staff back there. And that helps. The clerk up here in the front is very busy, and when you try to get her attention or distract her, it makes it difficult for her to do her job and stay focused on what's happening up here. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for the public forum portion of the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, no one in the room. However, we do have quite a few people online on Zoom this evening, so I would just ask if there is anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak during public forum, please raise your hand at this time. No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one hundred eighty-two thousand seventy dollars and nine cents for regular payables. Does counsel have any questions? Does counsel have any questions? Are there any items counsel wishes to remove? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
So moved.
Second. They moved in second. This will be roll call vote.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groat?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. Under Old Business is a report from Police Chief Corey Kuhn on the two thousand twenty-two inaugural goose hunt at Sandpoint City Beach Park. City staff also seeks authorization to issue permits for a hunt this fall, and I'll now yield the floor to Chief Corey Kuhn.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just wanted to give a quick update for our two thousand twenty-two goose hunt that you guys approved at the end of last year. Just kind of a reminder, we had seven, seven days is what we permitted of that timeframe and that just over a month. In that, in those days, we had weather anywhere from about twenty-three degrees on the high down to some of our lows about minus twenty-three with the wind chill factor. I think the one was a negative five, not counting the windshield chakkar. So a large a quite a large distance, and that'll come important in a minute. We had over a hundred applicants. I don't remember the exact number, but I know we had well over a hundred applicants that came in, put in for it, and was part of that initial draw, which was, which was wonderful. If you remember right, we had the permittee plus three friends could show up. If everybody would have showed up, we'd had over eighty people total in that timeframe because of the cold weather and some of the days that we had. And there was a few times that we only had one or two people show up at the blinds to actually fulfill that. But every, every event, every day, we had people show up, and a lot of them were telling us just to honor the draft and what the city had done. So with that being said, the big question has been, was there any geese taken or harvested during that event? The first day that we were out there, the weather was nice, it was about twenty-three degrees. Animals were moving. Everybody in the blinds had an opportunity to shoot at a goose. We only had one gentleman that was actually able to hit and then recover that goose. So we had, the very first day, we had one that was recovered. The other question comes up is, did it have any tags? No, it did not. So it was not a banded goose that was taken that first day. After that first day, I think they reported back to us that they had seen a couple of geese, but they weren't close enough to shoot out. So really, that first, that first day was really the only opportunity that they had to have an opportunity to shoot. One of the big questions that we had during the last council meeting was, how are we going to define success? I can't remember who, who asked it, but that was one of the, one of the questions is how do we define success? So I was thinking about it the last week to see if I could, to see if it was successful. I told you initially, having it, having it approved and getting through it was going to be a success in itself. And so I just kind of wanted to recap. So in my life, I got four goals in life. Basically, it's to show up, to learn, to have fun, and to win. Whether I'm coaching sports or whatever I'm doing, or even our guys at the office, that's kind of my, my brander that we focus on. So I, I looked at that, my four goals, like the show-up concept. We had over a hundred people put in for applicants at the last minute. This room was full of people that showed up for that draw. They showed up when it was minus twenty-three degrees, just to honor the ability they had to be down there. They were happy. It was amazing. I was miserable. They were happy. They were happy. They were just happy to sit out there in the wind and the cold. That, I think duck hunters are a different breed, is what I've learned. It was well organized. The event went smooth with that initial day on that, on that draw. It was a success in that aspect. We learned, we learned a few things. We learned that we got to improve our paperwork. Laser fish is something that we can improve on to get our applicants in, get them processed a little smoother, a little bit easier for us to track on the front end and even on the back end and some of that stuff. So we learned some of the things that I learned was interesting is that first week, that first shoot, when they were shooting, every blind had an opportunity to shoot. So we had over twelve hunters shooting. I talked with one of the residents that live close by in the trailer. I think she told me she heard one or two shots go off out of all of them, but really faint. We weren't sure what that, the sound was going to carry or how much that was going to be a noise pollution potentially. And really, it wasn't. None of the officers were involved. So it was interesting who could hear it and who didn't hear it. So that was something that we learned. We learned that we could, we could shoot safely. The hunters that are responsible can do it safely at our beach. The way that we had it set up was set up right. The spacing we had was good. All the hunters appreciated it. They had a safe zone to shoot from. And so that was something that, that we, that we not only learned that we can probably tweak to improve on just a little bit. We didn't have any protesters show up. We had a couple of people show up that wanted to walk the beach that wasn't happy that the beach was closed. But that was it out of all of it, but the weather was not the best walking weather at the same time, too. So ways that we can improve some of that communication in the front is something that we learned just to make sure. One of the things we're going to ask is you can approve, approve it now. One of the, one of the positives for that is that allows us to plan a little bit better. We, we need some more, we need, we need more signage that we didn't have initially. And so this will give us some time to get some of that stuff ordered. What else did I? I wanted to kind of, one of the hunters, Gil, he sent us an email, and this is what he said. I just wanted, wanted to read it to you. He said, I did, in fact, show up yesterday more to honor the lottery pick you guys bestowed upon me for the reason, for any reason, expectation of appearing for the birds. He wasn't expecting to shoot anything. He goes on to say that this year's been one of the most difficult waterfowls hunting in North Idaho because of the prolonged colds. And he goes on and he, he says, he gives us some advice. He says, a lot, he says, I do a lot of scouting and hunting in the Bonner County, Bonner County areas. He goes, he's burned a lot of gas, a lot of time just looking for birds. So he knew when he went down there, that that concept was going to be tough to shoot, but in the honor of it, he made a recommendation for us, and his recommendation is that we do it a month earlier when the birds are still here, before that bitter cold sets in, before the snow hits, and before the grass is covered up and they, and they leave for the most part. And that was kind of the running theme with a lot of those guys that hunt, that was hunting for us. The one goal was fun. I chuckle when I think about fun and goose hunting. To me, they don't go hand in hand, but those guys had an absolute blast. And the most important part at the end of the day was that, was the event planned and executed successfully. And I think, yeah, so I think at the end of the day, we won. We knew there wasn't going to be a big harvest. It wasn't going to be a big number taken from that aspect, but to be able to go out and achieve those things that we did, I think at the end of the day, it was, it was successful. Our goal this year is to have the council approve another hunt at the beach. The difference you're going to see in that is that we want to do it for the month of November. Talking with Parks and Rec, the, the water level's down. The boats will be out of the slips, and if that all works out as planned, November first, that'll all be done. So we'd shoot from, we'd do the same time twice, twice, twice a week for the month of November, and we would start it that first week, and then we'd end it at that last week in November. And I think when we start talking about success and actually harvesting some, it would give a better opportunity to do that in that timeframe. We went from, I can't remember my numbers now, two weeks before that, I think we had a hundred fifty geese at the beach to when we started the hunt because of the weather. They were hiding up in the deltas. So, so with that, so there's a kind of a rundown with the, with, I'll take any questions, but with the concept that we do want to go ahead and approve it now because of that ability for us to plan, get prepared by our signs ahead of time this year instead of waiting till last minute and have a rush.
Chief, did you get any insight into whether there was an effective deterrence just from having the presence there of the hunters?
You know, with, no, and I say that based on the weather that we had. No, there's, I don't think this year was a good mystery for that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I had several citizens asking you, you know, how, how successful is this going to be if the kind of the rules of the hunt, you know, the blinds faced out over the water, you only could fire over the water, but most of the geese are even when there's no snow on the ground, likely to be behind those blinds where all the grass is. Is there any opportunity in the, within the hunting regulations or laws to, you know, rouse those grease geese and try to get them out over the water in any way? My, my friend said we should take the six-year-old karate kids from the studio, let them go out and chase the geese and do.
We do, we do have a plan to help with that. So if that's the case, we do have a plan to get them to take flight.
Yeah. Okay. Doesn't involve karate kid.
It doesn't, it does not involve, it does not involve little kids running around playing karate.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Chief, thanks for undertaking all of this. The first time's always hard. You learn a lot. There was much conversation, and this was successful because we did learn and we have a first, and we'll have a second, and we'll have a third until, and we will continue to learn and be better addressing our, our constituents' needs. So this is exactly where we need to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief, for putting this on. I do want to say, I'm not for this. I wasn't for it the first time. I probably am not going to be around for coming through on the second time around. I wish there was more science involved that proved to us that there was more E. coli in that fecal matter than the lakes around us. The one thing I will say, big kudos to you, to the Sandpoint Police Department and Parks and Rec and the city staff driving down there each morning and talking to your team down there. City Beach was blocked off. You guys did a great job on rerouting the traffic that was coming down to City Beach. Caution tape all along the sidewalk directly east, or excuse me, west of Kids Beach over there. You could tell something was going down halfway down, going down Bridge Street as well, too. So again, I may not agree with how this is going on. I do appreciate the, the level of concern and management that your team and the city staff had for this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just had one comment. Since we do have a long holiday weekend during the month of November, would there be a possibility to expand during that timeframe when there might be families that have more flexibility and time off in order to participate? Just a thought.
Yeah, no, and I think the goal is for us to open it up from November first to the end and then allow the, allow us to manage how many we want to do in that week. And so I think the answer is yes, with the concept. With fishing games advice is we don't want to overshoot it because they won't come back. So having that balance.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And Chief, can you explain either the reasoning or the regulation that required shooting over the water? Like, is it possible to, I'm just curious to.
For me, it's a safety thing. Even though that the firearms are used, the rounds are used, the gauge they use, they don't travel very far. But for me, I have a hard concept of allowing to shoot back towards the city. So for me, it's really a safety thing of having them stand there, shoot over the water, just in case by chance we do get somebody that comes in jogging, misses a sign, we miss somebody. And a lot of areas they do, they'll let the public still stay up in the area because they know they're shooting away from them. But for me right now, it's just, it's just, just safety factor for me. So there isn't any regulation. That's what it comes down to. So.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? All right. Appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the, is there more you want to say? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Amelia Boyd.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, Amelia. I'm a citizen. Um. Five years ago, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission and, uh, the sole purpose was about the geese at City Beach and all the feces. Uh, because geese can poo up to three pounds a day, each goose. So it's pretty disgusting and I, during my tenure there, we discussed, as Joel knows, we discussed on what to do and how to rectify the. The goose feces. I'm appreciative. I was out of town when you guys discussed it and I was really happy to hear that you approved the hunt. And I hope you continue with that, um, aspect of hoping, you know, trying to rectify the situation. Whether or not the science is there, it's disgusting and I don't think our children should be walking through the feces. At City Beach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Appreciate that. And clerk?
Uh, only if someone online would like to speak that can raise their hand at this time. No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of permits to discharge firearms at. Sandpoint City Beach Park under specified rules for the purpose of a goose hunt. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? This will be real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under new business this evening, the property owners of seven oh three Highway two approached the city to sell property that will allow a revised design of the Highway two. Improving access to South Boyer and overall connectivity for all modes of transportation. At this time, city council will consider acquisition of this property and if approved, a subsequent amendment to the multimodal. Transportation master plan. And now you have the floor to city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several of us that are going to speak on, uh, this item tonight, but I just want to give an overview. As we move through the process and you, Mr. Mayor, um, covered a lot of that. Um, Marty and Geraldine Meyer approached us at the city, um, late last year. Um, regarding purchase of their property, they're looking at retiring from the restaurant business and, and dubs. Um, and so offering that this could be an opportunity for the city to purchase their property at seven oh three US Route two. Uh, previously when, uh, ITD had an adopted, uh, design for the curve. Um, along the Highway two corridor, uh, the ITD had negotiated with the Myers for purchase of their property. Um, that would allow for more flexibility with corridor improvements. Ultimately, those negotiations were not successful. ITD at the time did not go so far as pursuing eminent domain when negotiations were unsuccessful, but. Uh, that is an option when you're looking at roadway improvements. And along the right of way, you have a property owner. Um, and a need to acquire property for some of those property improvements. And I think that that's. What drove, um, Marty and Geraldine to reach out to both ITD as well as the city this fall. I would note just for background that, uh, the city developed an updated concept for the Highway two corridor. That is the east-west connection. And, uh, that was developed in coordination with ITD. So there's a lot of misinformation that. Um, and misunderstanding that this is about purchasing the property in order to implement the curve. Uh, and so I want to remind, uh, councils, we're entering into this that we actually, we have an adopted. Concept for that Highway two corridor and I want to hand it over. First for the presentation tonight to Amanda and then Preston, who's been involved. With developing our multimodal plan to address what the concept is and where we are today. And with the purchase of this property, what the revised concept would look like and a little bit about why.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good evening, counsel. I, a little bit more about Preston on the line with us. For those of you who are not familiar with him, uh, Preston Stinger is a principal at Fair and Pierce. Uh, he is a professional transportation planner. Uh, he has over two decades of experience in transportation planning specifically. Um, including multimodal planning as well as environmental studies, corridor analysis, really throughout the Western United States. Um, he's also a technical advisor at the, uh, AIA Urban Design Committee. As well as a technical advisor at the University of Utah's Metro Research Committee. Um, I bring that forward, um, as way of an introduction, just to let you know that while. This is going to be a joint effort in presenting tonight between Preston and I, I'm going to focus on some of the history. He's really going to focus on the technical side of things. Um. Preston is based in Utah. However, when we solicited for consultants to participate in our multimodal planning effort. Which was a public solicitation, the ultimate selection of Fair and Pierce as well as OTAC was truly a committee decision. Um, and for over two years, they worked on that multimodal plan with us. Preston very much understands our transportation system. He has spent many, many hours in this community, not only boots on the ground, looking at our system analysis, uh, directly. Through modeling, but also with our community. He spent a lot of time listening. Um, he's attended the keg pole. He's attended various community events and workshops to hear directly from the community. He's also done a significant amount of. Um, research and understanding of existing data and. Uh, previous, uh, planning efforts that have occurred. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context because not everyone, uh, may recall Preston. It's been a little bit since he's presented to us last, but we continue to work with him and he continues to review all of our private development traffic impact analysis. So intimately involved. Did I miss anything there, Preston?
Uh, you got it. Probably, probably said too much good things, good things about me.
Well, uh, with that, thank you, Preston, and we're glad you're here with us tonight. So again, I'm going to start with a little bit of history about why we're, um, having a conversation about Highway two. It certainly started long before I joined the city and many of us in the room. Uh, so a few years ago, at least twenty years, twenty-two years ago. Um, we started with some of the, uh, different. Efforts that are on the screen here from a kickoff of an economic report in our downtown core and really looking at revitalization. I'm not going to read every element there, but moving forward to ultimately in twenty-ten revising our urban renewal district. Um, and along the way, adopting a comprehensive plan that obviously sets the tone for our overarching vision for downtown. As well as our community character as a whole and our focus and priority related to pedestrian and bicycle, uh, connectivity. Beginning in two thousand and eleven, uh, there was a strategic, uh, steering committee. That was led by, uh, David Evans and associates in partnership with the Idaho Department or Idaho Transportation Department. And they kicked off an effort to really focus on how do we relinquish? The, uh, downtown streets to the city of Sandpoint so that we can have that character in our downtown core that we desire to help facilitate some of that economic vitality. Recognizing that coming in twenty-twelve, the Byway project was going to be implemented. I think it's worth noting that the Byway opened on July twenty-seventh and twenty-twelve. That project actually started the planning effort in the nineteen forties. So in the nineteen forties, we recognized that there was a need to get the volume out of our downtown core and around our community. Uh, moving forward, that process, uh, with negotiating, what would this solution look like? So A, how do we get volume out of our downtown core so that it can be a place of experience? As well as how do we efficiently, uh, have, um, accommodation for all of our different modes of transportation? So the blue there is representing what is referred to as the Curve Project. And the yellow is representing the downtown streets that ITD subsequently relinquished to the city. So along that way, uh, concepts were developed, preliminary designs were contemplated. And as I'll discuss later. The city, uh, provided a substantial amount of feedback to ITD about what was important to our community. There were multiple public hearings and workshops, as many of you will probably recall. Um, and then moving forward in twenty thirteen, the, uh. And I'll get into more details on why, but the curve concept was actually removed from the ITIP, which is essentially, if you think of the ITIP as the. Uh, forecast for the Idaho Transportation Department, their forecast of what projects they're funding. In twenty fourteen, uh, the city requested that they consider some alternatives to the curve. And in twenty fourteen, uh, a public hearing was hosted to move forward with relinquishing those downtown streets to the city of Sandpoint. And, uh, to keep Highway two traffic off of our downtown, um, streets. There was, I just put the data point there, seventy-two percent of the hundred and thirty-one participants at that public hearing were in favor of that decision. Fast forward from recognizing that the, uh, project to the, the blue part of that project. Was going to, we were going to kick the can a little bit until we could further vet it. Uh, an effort, a substantial planning effort actually was, uh, undertaken called the Quad Cities Idaho Highway two, two hundred corridor. Planning effort. This team consisted of approximately thirty individuals in our community. Uh, for those of you that were here, then it was a substantial community planning effort. Um, it not only moved forward with some of the concepts that were previously discussed with ITD. But it really tried to take a closer look at how are we going to start achieving some of those, uh, priorities from a pedestrian. Uh, bicycle transition zone connectivity perspective. And I have a couple more slides on that. But just highlighting that effort took place in twenty sixteen. Um, it started before then, but that's really when it culminated. Uh, in twenty seventeen, we got our streets. That's when the agreement was signed and we moved forward with the reversion revision, um, from what were one-way streets to two-way. And then, as you all recall, we did our downtown revitalization efforts and then enter twenty twenty. Uh, ITD did a Highway two corridor management study, basically looking at volume and forecasted, uh, growth from. Uh, Washington all the way to Sandpoint. So that Highway two corridor and some of the improvements that are happening down in the Spokane area and the anticipated. Um, increase in volume, moving further to, uh, our way, as well as some of the safety challenges that exist on that quarter. So, um. In twenty nineteen, we also kicked off our multimodal planning effort and it was ultimately adopted in May of twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Amanda, do you mind if I ask a question? Could you go back one slide, please? Uh, twenty thirteen, um, curve concept removed from ITIP. Could you give us a little more context there? Why was curve, the curve removed from ITIP? Um, in twenty thirteen?
Yes, I have a slide on it if you don't mind just holding your.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the, the Highway two corridor concept evolution. Um, and I will just quickly note here, I won't read all of this, just letting, uh, or just highlighting. That we've been talking about our technical challenges with the Highway two corridor and those priorities for nearly twenty years. And there is a theme throughout all of those efforts. When you look back at the history and the meeting minutes and you look at all of those priorities. Overarching, they haven't changed. And I think that our multimodal plan really took all of those planning efforts and made an attempt to bring them all into a single document. So I wanted to highlight this slide. This was from the two thousand and eleven kickoff meeting, which I thought was interesting. Uh, this was the two thousand and eleven kickoff meeting concept. So, uh. That roundabout, uh, vision there was one of the initial, um, concepts at play. That's the Boyer intersection at Highway two. Through the planning process, uh, the city provided a support letter actually, uh, regarding the project that, like, I'll call it the blue section in that first slide. And you'll notice there, I, I found this a little bit interesting, that second sentence, the city of Sandpoint is excited to see the curve project move forward. Uh, this is a letter from our mayor at the time, uh, and this letter actually included. Approximately forty, um, comments to ITD about direct feedback on things they want, we wanted changed in their design. ITD responded the following month, uh, with. A response to every single one of those comments and overwhelmingly addressed majority of them. There were a few, uh, based upon standards that they couldn't accommodate. But a lot of the things related to the type of lighting, we wanted our lighting to be more pedestrian friendly so that it wasn't tall, for example. Um, the type of stormwater treatment that we wanted, the bicycle and pedestrian crossings. We articulated all of that to ITD and there were responses, um, to address those concerns to the best of their ability at that time. That resulted in this concept. Um, it's only a partial, um, it's actually a design. It's a preliminary design. Um, it resulted in this. Like, referenced as alternative B. What you're looking at here, north is kind of skewed to, uh, the top of the page. But that Boyer intersection fundamentally, the alignment was retained. Um, and I have a slide summarizing this. But Pine Street turned into a one-way and that's why that signal, which we have a better, uh. Picture of here in a second, that signal that's currently, or that was at Pine and Fifth, that's now currently in Church and Fifth, um, was moved in part. So that it could accommodate this one-way traffic on Pine. So northbound, um, takes Pine and southbound goes where those ITD parking lots are. That's considered, um, called a couplet because it's splitting northbound and southbound traffic. This slide, uh, is really trying to highlight some of the challenges and get to the answer of your question there, Jason, um, which is the. To be clear, the curve project, and I put it in quotes intentionally, is an actual project with an actual design. It's not a concept. Which means they took it from a cartoon and they moved it into further analysis with roadway geometry, looking at radius of turns. The lane widths, all of that detailed effort. They responded to our comments and then ultimately, uh, the city. Came back with a lack of support at the end because of the impacts to the businesses. And ITD as a result agreed to delay the project until that demand or volume of traffic was required the change. And the city in turn agreed that we would accept the effects of the delay of the project. So today, the curve itself, the actual project that was designed remains the only designed project accepted by ITD. The concept that is in our multimodal transportation plan is a concept that has less detail than what the curve was designed to, if that makes some sense. So on the right-hand side there, the, uh, green is highlighting what the curve, um. Project really, the challenges that we still had with it. So it, what, it is a couplet, um, from Boyer to Cedar. Pine Street again was one-way, um, which sends traffic north to go, um, south and then west. That created pedestrian issues at Oak. Which we've articulated in writing. Um, it did not impact dub speed. It also retained the skew at the intersection, which means that we still have the challenges there with Pine Street and on South Boyer. It also didn't resolve the safety pedestrian issues that we had on the pathway at Boyer. So if you take the community pathway. To date and you get to that intersection at Boyer, it's a real challenge to navigate and that's something we've heard from the community consistently. But fundamentally, the last bullet there, um, is the impact to dubs as well as several other businesses. The right-of-way acquisition with the Curve Project not only drove the costs up, but our community said this is too much impact to the business. With that, I was going to turn it over to Preston to show you how we responded to this. If, like, you had any other questions.
Amanda, yeah, can you just go back to the previous slide a little bit? We clicked through that really fast and.
This one?
Yes.
Sure.
Is this what you referred to as the adopted curve design at the ITD with more detail than what's in our multimodal plan? Is this the current adopted curve concept?
Wouldn't say it's adopted. It's, it's the curve design.
It's the curve. This is the, but this is all the ITD currently has in terms of a plan. They were to come in tomorrow. This is what they'd want to implement.
Yes, they also have additional sheets, sheets that have dimensions on it that have, I mean, they have, uh, calculations on how much area of right-of-way acquisition we need. They progress the design farther than this one sheet.
Okay. Can I ask a couple of questions about this before you, Preston begins? Um, in our multimodal plan, we've made some changes from this concept.
Yes.
The multimodal plan retains Pine Street in, as two-directional, correct?
Yes, and we have a whole other side of what the multimodal plan does.
Okay.
That's different than this plan.
Okay. Uh, just a quick observation though, in the, our multimodal plan, we lose, as it currently stands. We lose connectivity between South Boyer and North, North Boyer, correct?
Yes.
So that the, I'm sorry, man, I'm trying to wrap my mind around this. So the, the reason this was ejected in two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen by the city. Was the impact on businesses before, above anything else. And I, I've heard at least four businesses would be probably forced to sell under eminent domain to fulfill this plan. Is that, is that approach, is that correct?
My understanding as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That, I, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Okay.
Your honor.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I had a comment and I believe in addition to the businesses being impacted, I think one, the. Um, my historical context, once, um, the residents of Sandpoint saw this, they pulled, um. Back because of the five-lane configuration and were put off by that as the, um. Uh, as we historically know, the other end of, um, Cedar. Fifth by larch is five-lane. And so I think that some people were very concerned that we would end up with something very similar. That people felt was unsafe for pedestrians. So that was also part of the context of rejection on this level.
Good.
All right. Preston, I will turn it over to you now. Um, if you wanna maybe highlight the, oh, actually, I'm gonna pause on and handing it over to you, Preston. I forgot I had more slides of history. I'm sorry. So, uh, again, this is back to the curve, what that included, what it didn't include. Ultimately, we signed an agreement, a cooperative agreement with I T D stating that, as I mentioned earlier, when the system begins to not function as they define functioning, that we would, uh, or that we would accept those impacts to our system and that they would move forward with the project. So I bring up this cooperative agreement because I think that sometimes it is a little bit lost that the curve went away. It did, it it did get paused. However, we signed an agreement that says when their system is functioning at an unacceptable level, meaning when the volume gets to the point that their system's no longer functioning to their standards, that they would implement a project. And and that's how it works on a highway corridor. While the city of Sandpoint in our multimodal plan, we absolutely have adopted a level of service, for example, at intersections of a D. We've, we've had that consistent for many, many years and we didn't change it with the multimodal plan. It remains our priority on our system. We're not in a position to dictate I T D's accepted level of service. It's, it's not our jurisdiction. We can work with them and we can cooperate, which I think was the intent of this agreement. And um, I I think that it's just helpful to highlight that eventually the system, if the volumes and the demand pencil out, it could take years, it could be longer than what one anticipates. But eventually the volume, volume will require changes.
That leads me to another question before we go on. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. What was the level of service in two thousand and eleven when this project was initiated, initiated? Was it, were we at a threshold where the I T D, this was a priority for them in two thousand and eleven? And where are we today?
It's a complicated answer, and I'm not saying that to deflect. The level of service is specific to each intersection. And typically, when we speak about a level of service, as Preston has kind of trained me to say, it's the average functionality of an intersection. So to really answer your question, you would have to look at every single intersection at every single lane, if you will, because we might have one lane that's functioning in a V and another section that's functioning in an A, it averages out to be a B. But fundamentally, to your uh, question, was this a priority for I T D? I, my sense is yes. There was a need at that time in the aspect of not, typically, transportation comes when things are so bad that now we're being reactive. Think the intent was to get ahead of this and try and resolve what we anticipated to be growth and a volume increase. Some areas were functioning better than others, but ultimately the effects on our system were all about how do we get our streets downtown? That was us driving that train. And this was sort of coupled with, how do we achieve that goal? Does that make sense? So we didn't have one intersection where it was like, oh, this just isn't functioning very well. It's that the whole system, we were looking at a change in ownership and how do we get that east-west traffic out of where we wanted to make significant improvements to the experience, which was our downtown.
And and is it correct that in that twenty fifteen cooperative agreement, the city agreed to basically accept levels of service as low as F on our city streets to maintain a level of service of D or above on highway two? So since that time, we have done certain things and we might be obligated to do certain things in the future, such as cutting off access from Florence or Marion or whatever streets, all these weird six-way intersections that cause chaos on highway two right now. Are those, are there, there are, I assume there are still measures we could take to maintain a level of service acceptable to the I T D in the future that we haven't taken yet? Is that, is that correct? I've I've heard even like pacing of the stoplight on Division could be improved to favor highway two.
There are multiple options to improve the level of service, yes.
Um, Amanda, I have a question. So my understanding of level, just level of service is it's strictly defined as for cars. So it has nothing to do with anybody else in the intersections or in the city or the residents of Sandpoint. So it's strictly car-centric speak.
Preston, do you wanna answer that?
Yeah, it's, that's partly true. The, when you're looking at a signalized intersection, the operations of that intersection that determine the level of service does account for the crossing time of pedestrians and or bikes that would be crossing in crosswalks. So that's factored into the signal timing that then results into the ultimate levels of service of the intersection. So it counts for number of pedestrians crossing at crosswalks at signalized intersections. And if they're crossing at a stop sign intersection, um, at a crosswalk, uh, and you, and you do include pedestrians in your modeling of that, it accounts for that delay to the vehicles of those pedestrians crossing, since they have the right-of-way in those situations. It's the, the effect, the impact is on the vehicles and not the pedestrians in that case.
Right. So again, as I said, it's a car-centric system. So we fail if our cars can't get through, but if our pedestrians have to stand there for thirty minutes and wait for four lights before they can cross, that's considered fine.
Yeah, that shouldn't happen. They they should be able to get their, their pedestrian call every cycle of that signal, they get called unless I T D has changed that to the point where they get skipped, but that's not how signal controllers operate. But you are correct that if there are ways of analyzing that to look at the delay of pedestrians instead of vehicles. Um, so there, there are methods of doing that, but the way that all they now suspend done to date has been focused on the vehicles and that level of service associated with them. That's what I T D bases their operations off of on U S two.
So I guess I'll just state my frustration with how that is across the state, probably across many states, um, across the federal highways. I know that over the past ten years, the, the federal highway systems have started to look at their engineering in a, in a much different way, but that's a topic for a much longer conversation at a different time. But um, as we promote Sandpoint as a pedestrian town, place to be, but yet we are stuck with the state regulations that make an A prioritized on a car specifically, not on a human being, but on a car. So as a councilperson sitting up here fighting the state, it is a, it's a frustration that maybe we should flip-flop the system and prioritize what we want.
I, I will note to that, if I may, that I think that what is unique about this agreement compared to a typical negotiation is typically the state would accept a level of C. And in this agreement, they've, they've recognized that there's a broader priority and gone to a D. I recognize that we, and I think we've articulated that in our multimodal planning effort, have recognized this is not our, as a city, only measure of performance. So a hundred percent, I think that that's been carried forward. And with the highway two, two-hundred study, that was further discussed. I think that why I included some of our concepts, I thought, even though this is a lot of words, it's really important to consider the overall vision of that corridor that was articulated in that planning document because I think that it is absolutely something that resonates today as it did twenty years ago, as it did seventy years ago. And I'll let you kind of read it yourself, but if you even just read the black words instead of the blue words, I think that our unique sense of place and our economic opportunities and safe circulation and access for everyone in all modes was what we were communicating even in two thousand and two thousand and eleven, and it remains to be what we're still talking about and communicating. This is just a snapshot of some of those key priorities within the plan. This was the concept that was developed from the uh, corridor study. This concept had, um, I will know it has a lot of trees and landscaping shown. It's, it's more of a hand sketch. It's a softer type of design than what our multimodal planning concepts include. Um, we were very intentional in our documents to not include trees and not include some more of the finite details in that regard, recognizing that those elements will come with the preliminary design. So not that they were left out, as in we're not doing them, but that this is a high, high level of a concept about where and how, not necessarily how many trees we're gonna have and what's the width gonna be. So different type of planning document. To kind of highlight there.
Amanda, before you go on, how many lanes does this twenty sixteen concept envision along Boyer between Ontario, or sorry, along highway two between Ontario and Boyer? It's kind of hard to tell. Is this one lane in each direction or is this two lanes in each direction?
It's uh, one lane in each direction with an occasional turn pocket.
Okay.
And then when you get to the intersections having, you know, at times the
And what was consideration paid in the highway two, two-hundred co- planning process in twenty sixteen to level of service in the lanes? I, I, I know you just distinguish between that level of service at intersections versus level of the service in, in any given lane. You know, I think most standpoint citizens when they look at this think, yeah, we'd love to have highway two look like that. That's a huge improvement over what we currently have. What would the I T D say if we showed this to them right now? And and that, that kind of ties into if the issue is at the intersections, is a two or three-lane option possible from the I T D's perspective compared to what's in our current multimodal plan, which is a four and five-lane option?
Only speak to the facts. I can't speak for I T D as, and I'm sure that goes without saying. What I can say is in two thousand and eleven, we asked in writing in that letter that I previously showed for it to be two and three lanes, that we did not want four to five-lane uh, roads within our system. And I T D's response to that was that that didn't resolve the capacity issue. By capacity, I mean volume. We have a certain amount of volume that's forecasted and that that those number of lanes didn't accomplish that. I can also answer in the aspect of this study and, and I T D's perspective. My response would just be that this planning document, while it was a very robust community effort, to the best of my knowledge, I have not seen anywhere where this was actually modeled or analyzed from a data perspective on what the effects would be. And I certainly, while I T D was a participant in those discussions, am not aware of them ever accepting this number of lanes. That said, I will also note that I'm not aware of any data that exists that currently supports that we would have four to five lanes from basically Boyer to the west.
So the, I, I read the twenty nineteen highway two corridor assessment. And at least three and a half years ago, I T D was projecting no need for an expansion to four lanes until beyond twenty fifty, likely twenty fifty-five. Uh, that the twenty forty forecast placed widening of this corridor as a very low priority. There were in fact several improvements along this corridor that were identified in that study that were moderate priority. There's actually no high priority improvements through the Sandpoint highway two corridor. But at least three years ago, the, the I T D itself didn't estimate a need to widen this corridor until twenty fifty-five. That, that was the approximate date that it said. That's, you know, a generation from now. How did our multimodal plan end up with the four and five-lane the concept through here when the I T D itself is projected, no need for that widening until thirty years from now?
Great question, and I'm glad you asked it because I think it deserves some clarification. Our plan, which we're gonna highlight here, and I do want again, it didn't get into how many lanes. It was not a capacity type of concept. In fact, we don't show any image or any concept that really provides that level of capacity from Boyer to the west. When we're looking at a concept for uh, an intersection, that's where you do start to see additional lanes because you're looking at turn lanes. And yes, some of the line work extended through the intersection because we haven't determined how far that turn lane needs to go, for example. So it's a very high-level concept. How many lanes we actually need at a given location and how long they'll be, that's all to come through the design process. That all comes with a more detailed analysis regarding queuing, how long an intersection backs up. So um, I guess to, to wrap up the answer to your question there, your understanding of the need or the lack of a need in widening this corridor is consistent with my understanding as well.
Thank you.
I promise, Preston, you're almost up. It's a multimodal. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Preston, if you can kind of talk about us kicking that off and then we'll, we'll go into the concepts.
Sure. Uh, I wanna highlight a couple of things here out of the multimodal master plan. So it was really important that we understood what the goals, objectives, vision were of the community here at the onset of this. And you know, it was very clear in Amanda and her team when they put out the request for proposal that we ended up submitting on that the focus here was about multimodal. It wasn't a traffic master plan. It was a multimodal transportation plan focused on all modes, providing options for all modes. So that's how we, that's how we proposed in this project. And then that's what we heard from the community through the outreach efforts as well. If, and and I'm sure you've read through this in, at bedtime, this is probably your favorite read. So you probably know exactly what I'm about to say, but there are goals and objectives written in here, and there are ten goals and objectives. And the top three are all focused on pedestrian and bicycle. That's how important those aspects, those specific modes were in this plan. So one, make sure we highlight that that was a, a large effort of this. We are focused on some things that are a little more heavy on the traffic side of things when we're talking specifically about some road realignment and things. But those are not just beneficial to road connectivity, but they're beneficial to multimodal connectivity, including bicycle and pedestrian. When we do our planning process for transportation, we like to think about it like a layered network. Like, you think about it like a sandwich of maps. So you have one layer that's pedestrian network. You have one layer that's a bicycle network. You have one layer at the truck network. You have another layer that's vehicular passenger vehicle network. And those are all get layered on top of one another. Some of them overlap, some of those routes overlap, some of them don't. The, we do i- in the transportation world, we have a hierarchy of roadways. You have a roadways that are serving different purposes. So you have freeways, for instance. You have principal arterials and minor arterials. You have collector streets, you have local streets. And they all serve different purposes. So it doesn't make sense to apply the same planning methodology to each of those streets. Uh, for instance, you wouldn't have bike lanes on top of U S ninety-five as a freeway. Uh, it, it does not make sense. You'd have a separated facility in that case. So with that, um, I'll just quickly. Yep. So think about uh, the, the real goal of this is to make sure we have good accessibility and connectivity for all modes. And the really great part about Sandpoint is you have a great grid, grid system, a grid network of roadways that provides shorter trips, both from a vehicular standpoint, but shorter trips, especially for pedestrians and bicycles. You know, cul-de-sacs and roundabout roads and um, are not very conducive to short trips and miles traveled by, by all modes of transportation. By having a grid system with shorter blocks, which is what we have here, especially in the core of town, uh, it provides shorter distances to get to your destinations. We were trying to get back to that in, in this with um, some of the older plans, it started to break up some of that good connectivity and taking advantage of the grid, grid network. And we tried to bring that back into this new multimodal master plan. One of those items is changing Pine Street to back to east-west to get that good east-west connectivity that was lost uh, in, in prior changes in the network. And we also wanted to reduce crossing distances for pedestrians and bicycles, especially uh, along Fifth Avenue. And with the I T D, we'll still call it the curve, I guess, for our purposes here, but with the curve concept, it provides a couplet system, which is two one-way streets. So you have one-way northbound on Fifth Avenue and one-way southbound, that would be a new roadway, cuts through that diagonal area where those parked cars are. And now there we go. And by doing this, instead of having, let's just hypothetically say that we need five lanes of travel north and south. If we didn't have the curve, let's say that in twenty fifty, there's enough travel demand on Fifth Avenue that you want, that you would need five lanes of capacity. Instead of having those five lanes of capacity on Fifth Avenue and having to cross those five lanes of traffic, we are now splitting that up into two different roadways. So it's two shorter distances of crossing east and west for the, your active transportation users rather than one massive. Uh, so it limits our number of conflicts and reduces our our crossing distance there. That was one of the benefits here. That's why we made those changes to the original curve concept. Moving some signals around that Amanda already spoke to. And one other thing I wanna mention here is when we think about safety, which safety is another key item that was studied throughout the M T M P process, um, including the, the roadway safety auto that was done on Division Avenue. What we're trying to do is reduce number of conflicts on these roadways. So that it is more conducive to pedestrian and bicycle travel. So that it is more conducive to uh pedestrian and bicycle travel. And. And especially when you're. Paralleling some of these bigger roads such as US two, which is a principal arterial here in the city. Which serves a different purpose than. You know, a lot of her local streets. But we do have a parallel system. That is carrying a it's a multi-use path that's carrying pedestrians and bikes that's on that north side of the road, paralleling the road. And we do have a sidewalk on the south side of that road. We are trying to reduce number of conflicts along that, and that's i- if you'll remember back in the in the plan, you you might remember. We made a lot of recommendations along US two to reduce conflicts by closing some roadways, realigning some roadways. Reducing uh restricting, I guess, some movements in in and out of some of those roadways, all in the effort to. Uh, enhance the pedestrian and bike safety along that corridor. Very little to do with the vehicular side of it, uh, but there are some benefits there by reducing some delay uh for the vehicles, but primarily it was about reducing conflict. Uh, and by reducing conflict, you increase safety. Uh, let's see, Amanda. Maybe I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Preston, I do have a question. Um, I read some studies last evening about um. Just the increased danger of one-way streets for pedestrians and. Is there, uh, I guess, maybe a give and take here in that? You split the direction of traffic to decrease the amount of total width that the pedestrians are going to be dealing with with that. How that played out as far as uh? Safety for pedestrians?
Yeah, and it I actually haven't. Seen a lot of data around one-way streets being more dangerous than a two-way street. Uh, it. For a pedestrian. It is uh, you 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 are looking in one direction to cross rather than in two directions, so it it cuts down your. Inherent risk and the the conflict, the number of conflicts again coming into play here. Uh, of crossing a one-way street because you are, you're looking one direction and crossing one lane of. Of conflict rather than two lanes in this case. But you're exactly right. The. The the real benefit here is for reducing that co- that distance of crossing. The less time you have. In open pavement. Uh, the better. So reduce that conflict of. That distance by either having bulbouts, reducing your width total. Benefits that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Preston, I have a question for you. Was there any consideration in this process of making the uh westbound? Curve element of this. Couplet, a single lane instead of two lanes. So we end up with. You know, we there's been quite a bit of discussion already about the need for four to five lanes as opposed to the need for three lanes through this entire corridor. Keeping a little bit more of that quiet neighborhood feel. In on a stretch of road that's going past, you know, restaurants with outdoor seating and cafes and. An axe throwing business, you know, fewer cars for axes to go through the windows of perhaps. Um, was there any consideration of making that a single westbound lane through the curve?
Are you referring to the red or now I'm guess blue based on my drawing here? Are you referring to that section there?
The red section uh southbound, yeah, you're what you just highlighted.
Uh, yeah, going back to Amanda's comment on that, that these are very conceptual ideas, and these are. These are kind of looking at twenty fifty conditions. Again, this is the long-term plan here, so this is looking out. Twenty thirty years into the future and accommodating twenty fifty, the year twenty fifty projected volumes. Uh, and you think about growth in Sandpoint. Which. Uh, right now, I guess, since nineteen ninety, if you look at the graph, it's a pretty sharp increase. Pretty consistent, one and a half percent increase in population in town. Over the recent ten years or so. And that will continue down the road, projected to continue. So where do those users go? We need to accommodate them somehow. And hopefully by that point, we have some other strategies from a. Transportation demand management side of things to encourage people and incentivize individuals to use other modes beyond vehicles. Uh, but for the purposes of long-term planning, we need to make sure we are accommodating what. Future demand is telling us is going to be. So what whether this is two lanes or one lane going in that southbound, westbound-ish direction remains to be seen. If if it, if that never gets to the twenty fifty mark that the um. Trial demand model is showing that it's going to be. Then, yeah, for sure. Let's go down to one lane. We don't, we don't want to build extra payment for the sake of building payment. This is. This is about making it livable, um, a a livable community that is conducive to all modes and giving all those modes options. So if. It doesn't demand two lanes in that direction in twenty fifty. There's no need to build that.
So Preston, um, i- isn't it true now that most of the research is showing that? If you provide the lanes that you actually increase the traffic and you never solve the problem. As opposed to decreasing number of lanes and encouraging alternative um ways of transportation. So I'm struggling with the fact that um our public, um, you know, our residents here get very attached to pictures and. And watercolor drawings and um. Uh, can become very offended or riled by the fact that we show. Maybe much more than we're going to actually need. So um. That's a frustration for me as a council member, um, just hearing you say, well, maybe we're never going to need these two lanes, but yet. This is how it was sketched, even if it is that, you know, forty thousand foot look. That we're always getting those comments when we're talking about master plans. So um. I guess my conflict is um. Uh, more lanes, you create more traffic as opposed to alleviating traffic, and I think that that's what the research is out there telling all of us.
Yeah, good comments. Uh, and and there is, that is. That is a real thing. Uh, induced and latent demand is a real thing where you build it, they will come. Uh, there's no, there's no doubt that is for real and will happen. Uh, with that said, without changes. Uh, in the future with the community as far as buying into. Alternative modes and to demand management strategies. That uh, in some cases requires a different way of living. That will, that will be tough to sway without, you know, a big. Program to push that in in the future as we as we go through the years. Right now, what we do know, if trends stay the way they are, if people continue to travel the way they are. Uh, our plan has to accommodate what we know right now. And what we know right now is that traffic will continue to increase over these next thirty years. And for the sake of long-term master planning. We're trying to account for the worst worst-case scenario. Because we got to budget for this costing-wise. Uh, and and make sure we're not stubbing our foot, that if things do happen in this way, that we we have plans to accommodate it. Um, so the way we typically look at it is, let's look at the worst case, and if we can back that down as monitoring goes along in these years and we track how. Uh, the whole transportation system is is moving, especially with these new things in place, these new concepts and new networks in place. Now, I mean, that would be my recommend- my recommendation would not be to build this full buildout day one. That to me is not smart planning. Uh, but this, there is a. There's concern for that. There's no doubt, but you got to also remember. Where where are people going to go if they're not going to travel on this road? They're going to bleed off into your neighborhoods and onto your local streets that not that are that will not be built or not conducive to that sort of travel.
Yeah, um, quick comment. I I. I totally agree, Preston. We don't want to create a situation where we're, you know, di- diverting frustrated highway tooth uh passersby onto residential streets where kids are playing. Um, I also view this a- as a planning document representing the values and the desires of the people of Sandpoint. It the the idea that we are. Presenting to the I T D a document that is almost like their dream come true. It's a four and five-way highway right through town. And we we uh Jennifer discussed the twenty eleven to twenty thirteen negotiations. And that just the term negotiation, it's like this, what are in our conversations with I T D, I I do think this is going to be a give and take. It's going to be a push and shove. It's a negotiation. If we come to the table with a document that says, here's your dream come true. You've got your four and five lanes, even though you don't think you're going to need it till twenty fifty five. We're ready for it. Bring it on. Um, personally, and I I I know you, uh, Jenna, um, Amanda and yourself mentioned how. You know, the the idea that. Uh, there may not be four lanes all the way through Sandpoint. This is just a concept, but the plan we have right now shows four lanes or five lanes all the way through Sandpoint. And if this is a negotiation, we should enter that negotiation with a document that reflects the desires of the people who live here. And very few people that live here desire to have a four and five-lane highway through Sandpoint. So my my question about, you know, maybe reverting this document to show only a single lane westbound, that's a fifty percent increase in capacity. That's more than the I T D projects is needed until at least twenty forty today. So um, I I, you know, going forward, this isn't what's on the agenda tonight. Tonight, we're here to talk about dubs. And the amendment to the alignment of Boyer, but going forward, just putting this out there for council and for staff. Uh, I would urge us all to consider amending or further amending our multimodal transportation plan. To more accurately reflect what I believe the people of Sandpoint desire, which is uh less volume and perhaps not a doubling. And more than a hundred percent increase in the volume, but you know, a a third lane is a fifty percent increase in volume. Which according to the I T D's most recent study is more than they expect to need by twenty fifty. So just something to consider. Again, I don't want to keep us going down this path. And I see Andy looking at me. We got to get back to dubs in Boyer.
Yes, so to. I appreciate that we are looking at the overall big scope of the corridor. Potentially, I think that we're getting a little into the weeds. And we are here today to talk about a piece of property that is reflective with dub. So I know that we are getting through. This presentation, but I'd really like to get to what we are here tonight that's on the agenda to discuss.
Thank you, Andy, and I would remind the council members to please address the mayor if you want to be uh heard. I appreciate that.
To that end, Mr. Mayor, may I respond just briefly? Take you back on Preston and uh is his comments and the capacity comments. Um, as everyone is aware, north of Cedar Street, we currently have four lanes on Fifth Avenue. It's two in both direction. This concept, just to be super clear, still provides. Two lanes in both directions in the long term from Boyer to Cedar. So what's changing is that section from Boyer to Cedar, instead of being one lane in each direction, it's two lanes in each direction. It's separated. The. And and Preston can speak to this more as well. The risk. And why we didn't go down the route of showing a lesser capacity system in the long term, our short term certainly did. It showed. Less changes and the least amount of impact as possible, focusing on the community's current priority, which is moving that signal from church. That's creating our South Sandpoint issues back to Pine. The risk of not planning for the future is that we would make holistically different decisions at key intersections. So back to dubs, if we had a plan right now that showed one lane. Northbound and one lane southbound between Boyer and Fifth Avenue. That intersection would look very different, and it wouldn't need to be. At the size that it is, nor would we be having a conversation about impacting dub's field. And we most likely wouldn't be having a conversation about the skew of the intersection at Boyer and a potential purchase of. Dubs. So planning for the future is making us look at what's the biggest area that we're going to impact potentially. Right? And then phasing it based upon the demand. So I wanted to bring that to light back to the. M- multimodal plan because I think one thing that we maybe didn't highlight enough on the pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements, as well as just. How this east-west concept vastly differs. From the curve project is we shifted the whole entire intersection at Boyer and Highway two to the northeast. With the priority of addressing the least amount of impacts to businesses as possible. That because that was, yes, there were pedestrian and safety issues in their original plan. We've highlighted those, and we've attempted to resolve many of them, all of them no, but many of them yes. We said, when we we gave Preston and the entire team the direction. Try to find a solution that addresses our pedestrian safety problems that we've been struggling with for all these years with the least amount of impact to businesses as possible. So our plan that's adopted already doesn't provide connectivity to South Boyer. Instead, it adds a signal at Ella. And it pushes traffic that direction. Because we can do that without taking out a business. This plan keeps dubs. We committed to making sure that the business itself wasn't um impacted as as far as the property. We committed that we would find ways to provide driveway approaches so that people could still get in and out of the business, that they would still have a route to it. But the overall through traffic of South Sandpoint using South Boyer is substantially limited in our adopted plan. Because we favored retaining businesses. The conversation around potentially purchasing. Uh, this property and this unique opportunity is us merely updating up an adopted concept to say. We do have a value and a priority to provide additional connectivity to South Sandpoint. And this is what it would potentially look like if we were to have. That property, we could have more options. It's not saying this is exactly what the lane configuration is going to look like at this location. It's trying ultimately, which is what I think our. And I want to come back to this design process really quick, but I have a slide on this. I added it from what was posted on. Um, our packet in that green box, regardless of the construction of timing, regardless of what the volume of traffic does or doesn't do, we can continue to speculate that. We've been continuing to speculate that for over twenty years. Is this the intent with furthering the design is to provide the community and the businesses adjacent to this project some certainty? So that they can make business decisions and actually plan for the future. I think as we think through what. What this project's going to look like in the future and what the next steps are. The green boxes in this design process represent what we've been doing. We've been talking about community pri- priorities. We've been talking about concepts. The next step is feasibility. And then the next step of how we're really going to fine-tune the design to provide more specifics on how we achieve that connectivity. For all modes and really look at what capacity we need and where the lanes are going to be in the turn radius and the queue distance and all those super important things, stormwater. Trees, et cetera. That's at the preliminary design phase. We haven't started that yet. And. Quite frankly, that's really the next step is we have this concept in our multimodal plan and we're asking I T D. To revise their curve design to better accommodate the plan that our community has adopted. That's the next step. Then eventually we get to construction documents and then we talk about funding and if we're going to bid and construct something and what that phasing would and wouldn't look like. So the next steps really are. Us looking at cost estimates. So aside from the dubs uh potential procurement. Um, looking at estimated costs at a planning level because ultimately our concept and our plan. Our anticipation is that it is substantially less costly than the original curve design for a variety of reasons. One of which is right-of-way acquisition. And then number two is in August, we are scheduled to go to the I T D board and ask for preliminary design funding. And then we continue that process of engaging the community, just like we did with our downtown revitalization project. We had a concept. We had a pretty picture about what this was maybe going to look like on Cedar and First Avenue. We engaged the community in that conversation, and then we came back once we had survey and we had um elevations and we had more information on. Needs for stormwater, et cetera, and we had a preliminary design and we said, now give us some more feedback. And then we took that feedback and we fine-tuned the design. So it's an evolution before we ever even get to the point of construction. So there's still going to be an opportunity for that input. Um, and I think that's important to hold on to. And then eventually we're going to be requesting at some point. We as a community, not as a jurisdiction, um, because the system is so integrated to consider being funded in that I TIP again. Um, I put construction to be determined. We don't know. I I put the soonest. Right? I mean, a a design process typically takes um three plus years on a project like this um at a minimum. Sometimes it's a twenty-year or seventy if we're looking at the byway. So. With that, I'll hand it back over to Jennifer with our requested actions unless you have further questions.
Council, any further questions for Amanda?
I didn't have a question relative to, um, so I'm a little confused about our costs relative to I T D costs. If this is state highway, how does all of that work? Because I think the public is a little. I'm a little confused, so I'm sure they're a little bit confused. If this is state highway. Why do we take on the responsibility? Do we take on a certain level of responsibility as a community so that we get a better product that our particular community is? Happier with um or? Happier with, um, or. Do we potentially waste all of that money because ITD comes through and decides this is a priority and they do whatever they want? So can you speak to the public and explain the costs and who pays for what?
Yes, it's a great question and I, I think the best way to answer it is, um. Going back to our multimodal plan for a second, we have a capital improvement plan within that. It looks at short term, midterm and long term plans. We identified this project as a capital improvement. The total dollar value of that project being. In the multimillion dollars, right, twenty million dollars. We allocated in our multimodal plan approximately one million dollars to assist in right away acquisition and design. So we identified during that planning process that. Uh, city funds would be contributed to the overarching project with the concept. That yes, us having a seat at the table on what this design looks like helps us ensure that. Some of those decisions that affect our system, right? I mean, the whole system is our system is taxpayers in a community, obviously. But the system that we're responsible for, if you will, from a jurisdictions perspective, um, it gives us more options. That's simply what it does. So at this point in time, ITD doesn't have a budget to be spending funds on this project because we're not in their I tip. So any right away acquisition that would come forward would be in the future on their part. In other words, they, they simply don't have the funds. The city is in a different position because we're not currently held by federal guidelines that they are. Held to as a state agency in their right away acquisition process. So the city purchasing property, whether it's this property or any other property that's not subject to all the federal requirements. Fundamentally reduces costs overall to the taxpayers, A, and number two, it's more timely. Um, as far as, uh, this, the state and how that would transition, it would be a transfer of ownership ultimately. Similar to how we did with our own streets. So at the end of the day. Much of this right away would be transferred, just like in the concept where we show that the roadway ends up impacting those field in the park. That right away that's currently ours or the, the property that's currently ours would become public right away that is owned and maintained by ITV eventually.
And constructed and built by them, correct?
Correct. They've already spent, I, it's just over three million dollars in design on this project.
Right. I was aware of that, but ultimately they pay for construction and everything else and the point in us putting. Our two cents in the game is that we have more of a shovel ready project that our specific commu.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone satisfied? Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. Did you want to hand it back over to Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. So late last fall, we were not anticipating the purchase of the, uh, Dubs property. We were moving forward with. Um, coordinating with ITV, looking at moving forward concepts to. Uh, design at some point and then negotiating again with ITV budget to move forward with. Design, um, and consider the city priorities and our concepts. Geraldine and Marty Meyer approached us at the city late last year. Because they intended to retire from owning their business and they were looking at selling Dubs. What they communicated to us at that time is. They were concerned that they would hand over a property and sell to somebody who was looking at moving forward with a business. That ultimately would be subject to negotiation of either with the city or. And potentially eminent domain of that property. And so they were concerned about handing over. That business to somebody knowing that this had been out there was likely out there in the future. The location of Dubs again, uh, our approach has been limiting impact on businesses with the design. There has been an outstanding concern relative to safety with the location of Dubs to even the existing highway where it is currently. We negotiated ultimately a price, um, with the Myers of three hundred and eighty, eighty-five thousand. For consideration, um, by the council, we did engage discussions with, uh, an appraisal firm relative to. Uh, that price and, um, and was an affair and reasonable price. Um, there was some negotiation back and forth with negotiating over all that price down. What we heard back from our appraisal firm is looking forward, they expected the cost of the property to only increase in the future. And they felt that was a reasonable, fair price. We, the city, as Amanda has covered. Don't have any plans at that intersection in the immediate future. And there is, uh, another couple in our community, um, Ryan and Beth, uh, Welsh. Who are interested in moving forward with continuing the Dubs business. Ultimately to relocate it at another location. So along with the negotiated purchase and sale for council consideration, we also negotiated a leaseback. To the Myers, so it would be a leaseback to Geraldine and Marty My- Meyer for the property that they could then sublease to a business. That wants to continue in that location with a term of two years and the ability to extend that. So that we don't, we are not tearing down a business that could be viable, somebody wants to operate, uh, in the short term. But ultimately then creating predictability for a business owner that that's. Viable location while saving taxpayers what would be future costs for a more expensive purchase of this property. With that, I want to hand it over to Geraldine and Marty. Um, they also wanted an opportunity to speak to the council about the sale and their experience with this in the past and perspective as the current property owners.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. One thing I think we want to make sure we're clear, you are purch- we have offered the. Property, not Dubs business. We will own Dubs business and continue to own Tubbs business. So I just really want to make sure that that is clear, that it's referred to as Dubs. But it is the property. I think if you look at the dates of the time, our life. Was turned upside down for four years, not knowing if the state was going to come in. And do an intimate domain and take us out of business. It was.
It was, it was hard.
It was a really rough time for, uh, us as business owners who. Marty has had Dubs for thirty-three years, thirty-five actually now. He had it before we were together.
Yeah.
Our first date was an ice cream cone. Um, so i- it's not. We couldn't in good conscience, um, we transitioned it to our daughter and son-in-law. They had opportunities to follow their passions and. Came up very quickly in August that they had opportunities other ways and we needed to find something. We ended up closing Dubs and saying, let's think about it, it's going into the winter slow season. Marty and I did a lot of talking and we didn't feel morally, um, ethically. Any right to sell Dubs knowing that this has just been out there and some other family could. Be in that turmoil that we were in for four years.
Yeah, I mean, how, how do you sell a business that takes years to get a return on your dollar? You know, and then consciously, you know, and I think it could have come back on us legally anyways, knowing that. So we don't have an opportunity, I mean. I think our only opportunity is the state or the city. Or continue and knowing that sooner or later, you know, with me trying to retire. You know, this was, this was an option.
So we approached both the city and the state. And said, okay, we're serious. We, um, so the city called back first, mentioned it and we said, okay, let's talk about it. Critical to us is to make sure that Dubs' ability to go on for the next seventy-five years. And it's wonderful in the multimodal plan, you've tried to save Dubs and thank you, but if you don't give us any parking people. That does nothing, okay? I mean, no offense, Amanda, I know I probably wasn't the kindest to you. Um, I'm sorry, I apologize, but. If you don't have parking for your people, we don't have a drive-through, we can't get one. Anyway, Dubs is important to us, our business, it has been our livelihood and our life for thirty-five years. So we found a, a young couple approached us and said, hey, we would love to be able to continue dub somehow. So when we talked about all this, we really said, what's important to us is not only a fair purchase price. We feel it's reasonable, it is not. Padding anyone's retirement, but even more critical is to make sure that there's the ability for a young couple to start. Their life and be able to lease the business from us, we will need to sublease the property back so that they can start. Their new Dubs and take it into the next thirty-five years, we hope. Um, and so I think those are really things that we have looked at the best we can for our community and. We would much prefer the city to be in control of this property because what we learned going through the curve. Is that the state.
Want to say bully you.
They don't, I don't know if they have the best interest in Sandpoint in their heart because they do have to look at what. Another Rastram Prairie and, and we feel that the city is in a better position if they have a bargaining chip. In this, and so that's one of the reasons we came forward. Um, and to said this would be, we feel it's a, it's a win-win-win. It gives, um, Ryan and Beth an opportunity, um, and it gives Marty and I the opportunity for him to retire. Um, and so I think it's just, we just really wanted you to know that. Dubs is part of our life.
Yeah, you know, and for the public that it was our decision, we come to the city for any rumors that the city is not coming and taking it. You know, we approached the city and, you know, now it's, it's in your, I guess your guys' ballpark. You know, so, you know, and we'd be, you know, any questions or anything on, on any of that?
Thank you. Any questions with Myers?
I don't know if I have any, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't know if I have any questions, but I just want to say thank you so much for the thirty-five plus years that you guys have been a pillar to this community. For us eating ice cream, for baseball teams, for the, the number of youth that you have had come through. Not as people that are just eating french fries and ice cream cones, but are productive, functional, working members of our community. Onto our society, that is, you, the children that you have, your biological children that you have are, they are yours. And so are everyone else that has come through those doors. So regardless of our discussion tonight. Thank you very much for everything that you've done for us in this town.
And we're excited because we're transitioning it to Ryan and Beth, so they get to start having their new group of family. You know, my, my children.
Yeah, I'll continue it.
My children.
That's the, that's the whole goal is.
Yeah.
You know, they, their time in there and when the time does come that, you know, they can take it and hopefully move to another building somewhere and continue. You know, they can take the ice cream with them, you know, and.
But that they know it, it's, it's not, it's unfair for a business to not. To, for a property owner to not know, are, is the state going to have it or not? And so we're excited. That our children refer to some of Marty's first employees as their favorite, his favorite children. So Ryan and Beth will get new favorite children, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One last note I would make for council consideration relative to this is we have these two items together for consideration with the council, the adopt, the. The purchase of the property, ability to lease back and then, um, the concept update to the multimodal plan. They aren't absolutely married, the purchase of the property gives us options moving forward and I think that you have heard that the concept that we. That we have, it needs to go through design, it would ultimately need to be refined, but the purchase of the property puts the. City in the position of a bargaining position with ITV. Um, moving forward with, uh, ultimately a project that they're going to do at some point in time. It creates certainty for the business owners at this location. The revised updated concept ours already in our multimodal plan limits the impact on the businesses. This further limits impacts on businesses with us giving secure, uh, some. Certainty to another business owner moving forward. Um, and ultimately, as we go through design, we have different options that could change. Um, with community impact as, as it community input as we're into the design. However, ownership of the property gives us some ability for some flexibility with that design and ultimately to be able to consider. That option, other improvements with the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have one question. The, um, twenty eleven to twenty thirteen ITD concept for the curve. Correct me if I'm wrong, was designed to not impact Dubs. Is that, is that correct? I think the. When you showed us earlier tonight and the twenty twenty-one multimodal plan was designed to not impact Dubs. If, if we amend the multimodal plan tonight to reroute Boyer through Dubs, which. I've come to understand in the last few days stands to benefit us as a community by maintaining connectivity from South Ward to North Boyer. Um, whereas otherwise we would likely have a curb there and that would be a dead end street around Winter Ridge. Um, are we certain that the ITD will accept this amended multimodal plan right now? Or will they look at that and say, nope, we're sticking with what we have in twenty eleven? And in such a case, what have we got on our hands now about a property that we didn't need to buy? Do you see what I'm asking? Like, h- how, how certain can we be that this proposed amendment that we're looking at tonight will be accepted by the ITD?
Mr. Mayor, would you like?
Yeah, please.
Uh, just to clarify on some dates, the image that's in front of you is the, uh, concept from twenty eleven.
Okay.
It doesn't provide enough detail, at least from my perspective, to be able to say whether or not Dubs was retained. Um, that advanced to this concept in twenty thirteen that does not accommodate Dubs.
Gotcha. So this is ITD's concept that would have eliminated Dubs?
That's correct.
Okay. Our multimodal plan would have preserved Dubs.
That's correct, because we, there, there's a really important distinction, uh, between the two plans. ITD did not have the ability to impact the park. So from a federal perspective, there's imminent domain process from a roadway, but there are some boundaries and. One boundary is you can't touch a park. We as the city have the ability to say, we can relocate this park and we're willing to allow this roadway to move to this location. Because we want to save this business or because we want stormwater or whatever the reason might be, that decision is ours as a park. The state, no matter what community they're in, they can't touch a park. So when we moved forward with our process and we said, hey. Perrin Pearson OTAC, come up with new ideas, ideas that people haven't really contemplated before. That achieved two-way on Pine Street. They said, well, we, we'd have to move this whole intersection to the east. Actually, remember Preston had his same drawing thing and he was sketching live on the, the Zoom call. And moved that whole intersection and said, what do you think about impacting the park? And so we had many conversations internally about that. Um, so I wanted to highlight that we had an opportunity that. Wasn't previously contemplated because a different entity was leading that effort. To the question of, is there a risk that we have this plan that the state doesn't support it? Yes, I think that's always a risk. What I can tell you is that we have had. Nearly a dozen conversations with ITD, many of which have been formal where our traffic engineers. And our models and our simulation information is presented to them in a room where, I mean, we've had at times, there's been nearly a dozen engineers. Talking all the data to help support the signal spacing, to help support, um, the configuration because it was a, it was a big. How do I say this? It was a big change to say that we can move a signal that we just moved from Pine to church and now we're trying to say we want that signal moved back to Pine. That was all database, so we had to prove that our data worked. My point here is as long as the data works, ITV is usually on board. So I, I think from the two thousand and thirteen responses, uh, April of two thousand and thirteen. ITV responding to each one of those points, it appeared to be, from my perspective. A negotiation that was trying to accommodate as much as could be accommodated. I don't think they're in an inch, they have an interest of, uh, bucking the tide on this one.
Amanda, can you also speak to the feedback at that BCAT meeting? And talk a little bit about BCAT for council members that aren't familiar?
Sure. So the Bonner County, uh, Transportation Authority is basically a regional transportation planning team. Uh, they have them across the country, ours is called BCAT and it includes, uh, jurisdictions from our. They have them across the country. Ours is called BCAT and it includes jurisdictions from our entire Bonner County area. We meet on a monthly basis and we work, we not only update each other on what's happening in various communities. From a project perspective, what are some of the challenges that we're having? As well as we collaborate to plan. So we're doing the urban area transportation planning effort. That is a collaborative effort between all of those stakeholders. The stakeholders include not only our communities in Bonner County, as well as it's actually led and chaired by a Bonner County Commissioner. And then the Idaho Transportation Department typically attends. If not always attends, we also have various legislators that are usually present. The governor's office is present every month as well. The local Highway Technical Advisory Council LTAC is also present. So it's a pretty robust transportation planning team. It's been established for a number of years and we had a conversation. Because ironically, this month, when the Bonner Daily Bee published the article about this potential project. It was the same day that we had our BCAT meeting and so it came up in that conversation. And there were maybe thirty people or so there. And I mean, even we have Dawn, I think here as well from Trail Mix, that it's just a whole, it's a diversified group. The school district is there. It's, it's a broad team is the point. The entire room clapped at the potential purchase of this property. So while I think that, you know, there's a variety of perspectives, there's certainly an understanding from a large group within our community that this has been a long, ongoing process. And that this potential purchase could be considered progress to open up some of those options and keep things moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if I missed this. How are we paying for this? For the purchase of this? Is this money through the multimodal or right-of-way acquisition, a full three hundred and eighty-five thousand?
So we have this for purchase and sale with earnest money for purchased, put down in this fiscal year and property not closing until next fiscal year. We have some carryover funds from capital projects that would be eligible for use for this, as well as we have the set aside for capital projects. And this would be an eligible project under that. So in our budget presentation to council, we would present you with options for funding. But we did a full review as to availability of funding in this lining up with existing available funds that the city has not budgeted in this fiscal year. But could be allocated for this in our next fiscal year, starting October first.
All right, any further questions? Okay, thank you Amanda and Preston and Jennifer for that presentation. That was great. And I really appreciate the robust discussion from council. I would invite any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter to come forward. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Brad Smith.
You, you can put it all together and if you want to come forward to the podium, you're welcome to take the floor. Three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name's Brad Smith. I'm resident here in town. And some of you also know me as the North Idaho Director of the Idaho Conservation League. I grew up in Coeur d'Alene and watched how a highway divided a town. When I was growing up, Highway ninety-five was expanded and we were told this will ease traffic congestion. And like Counselor Rule pointed out, I think it was a self fulfilling prophecy that when the highway was expanded, we got more traffic volume. And I would really hate to see our town divided in that way. If the curve is built and if the highway from Boyer to Dover is expanded to four or five lanes. You know, you can put in all the traffic signals you want and all the crossing structures you want. But if you've ever driven through Coeur d'Alene, have you ever seen someone actually trying to walk across one of those intersections on ninety-five? Or to ride their bikes across them? I, I can't think of a time. And I think that's the impact we'll see in our community. I think purchasing dubs is the right call because it will give the city some leverage when and if ITD does come forward. But what I'm hearing is that it may not even be till twenty fifty until there's a need to even do anything in this quarter. And so I completely agree with Counselor Welker that the multimodal plan amendment should be tabled. And the city should take the time to put forward its vision to position itself for when and if that the state does come knocking and wants to do something with this quarter, so that we can position ourselves to have what we want as a community as best as possible, knowing that it's going to be a negotiation. Because if those plans go through as envisioned by the state. You know, you're not going to be able to ride from the neighborhoods west and north of Highway two to downtown. At least not very easily or safely. And I don't know if you've observed how many school kids cross at Michigan on a school morning. But that's not going to happen anymore if that's a four or five lane road. So I would urge you to purchase dubs, but table this multimodal plan amendment and take the time to put forward the city's best vision for what we would like to see, so that the city positions itself best for negotiation with the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your thoughtful comments. Madam Clerk?
Andrea Marcaccio.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Andrea Marcaccio. I'm a business owner in the Granary District, Matred Brewing Company. And also a resident of downtown Sandpoint. I just wanted to speak briefly tonight that there's a group of businesses who feel like they will be impacted. We want to just reflect that there's been a lot of work put into this to date, so we don't want to disrupt or necessarily say that we don't support it. But we wanted to just invite more conversation with the Granary District and the businesses that will be impacted by some of these decisions. So I'm not speaking in favor or against something tonight, but just opening a conversation, especially as the preliminary design process could be coming up. And so that group of businesses that got together, there's five of us right now. I'm speaking on behalf of them and we're kind of instituting Granary Business, Granary District Business Association and inviting kind of a conversation, not only with city council members and the mayor, but also members of the city who want in, input and feedback and we just want to offer that so that we can put forward that represents our businesses. So some of the things that have already been mentioned tonight, and I'm just referencing Amanda because you did such a wonderful job. Just the timing of the project, the cost or perceived cost to businesses and the opportunity to businesses that might come up. Specifically viability during construction, if this does move forward. Things that we saw in the downtown project and those concerns would obviously affect the Granary District. Safety for family friendly experiences and our environment over at the Granary District. Sound pollution mitigation, wayfinding, connectivity and accessibility to our neighborhood. Long-term potential for expansion of that road. Maybe we put in one, but what does it look like ten years from now? And how does that impact our patios and bike riding by six-year-olds on their own while parents drink coffee, beer and other things? Defining downtown to include the Granary District more thoughtfully. Not necessarily saying it doesn't include it, but just how we do that publicly as a group collectively. And supporting the city and being our best advocate with the state, because we understand that that is what we're trying to do here. And utilizing our civic voice to, to come up with the best plan. And then last, just potential properties like the Dubbs project that could give us better leverage. There's a few more for sale. So just thinking through the precedent that you're setting by maybe voting for the Dubbs purchase tonight. And just want to open that up and say thank you for all the work and that we're here to listen and participate.
Thank you, Ms. Marcaccio. Appreciate those thoughtful comments. Madam Clerk?
Steve Holt.
Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Steve Holt. I, for context, I was one of the founding members of the Bonner County Association Traffic Team. BCAT that Amanda had mentioned back in the mid nineties. And I served on the Highway two, two hundred committee back in two thousand and fourteen, I think it was. And I'm also a property owner along what would be considered the curve at the Granary District. So this project, you know, has been around for a long time. And just for a little bit of context or my own perspective, you know, back when in two thousand and thirteen, when the project was proposed by ITD, you know, the city of Sandpoint and the city council had supported it up until a point and then it didn't support it. And actually, there was a, a troupe of people that came in here and, and sort of showed us, you know, some better alternatives. And that's how we ended up with what we have today. So, and from that, there was a letter that's been circulating around from the project for public spaces and also our retired Public Works Director Cody Van Dyke that I think speaks to and applauding the effort to actually stop the curve. And it really talks about how transportation departments sort of like nibble away at our communities. And I think that's essentially what this one, this one will do. I, again, I agree with both Brad and Andrea that, you know, I support the purchase of the Dubbs piece of property for future expansion. But before we can fully understand what's happening with what happens on that corridor. There's a valuable piece of property there now. It's been coming, you know, when we, the city first put in the parking lot, hardly anybody used it. And now it's used quite a bit. And, you know, when we worked on the Highway two, two hundred committee, there was less than consensus about what happened on that particular piece. You know, there was a talk of a park. It was a combination of parking and park. And then there was this road piece that goes through. So, you know, just in closing, I was a little confused about what's really happening here. And it seems like in terms of how the resolution reads, is that you're actually amending the multimodal transportation plan to emphasize that one section of roadway, which is called out in you know, in figure twenty-three, which actually shows the curve there. So it seems somewhat inappropriate to be amending a community plan that's over a hundred pages long. Has a lot of good things in it without getting some public input on it. You know, we need to have some public workshops to talk, give us the information on, you know, what these levels of service really mean and how badly we really need this, because, you know, we've all been here for a long time or some of us have, right? And it doesn't seem to have significantly changed. So I would support tabling the amendment on the multimodal plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, there are a number of people participating remotely on Zoom. I would just ask if any of those participating wish to speak on this matter, to please raise your hand at this time. Nobody additional has requested to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before us now is a motion to approve the resolution for real estate purchase and sale agreement and authorization to lease city-owned real property. Is there a council member that would like to forward that motion?
I forward that motion.
Sir, second, second, then moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I was going to speak and I didn't have the opportunity. Can I clarify, is your motion to approve both the purchase and the amendment to the multimodal?
No, just the resolution for real estate purchase.
Okay, thank you. Then I vote yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is a potential motion to approve the resolution for an amendment to the multimodal transportation, transportation master plan. Is there a council member that would like to forward that motion or is there an alternative motion perhaps to table?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we table an amendment to the multimodal plan. My fear is that if we amend it tonight, not, and this is not to say that I oppose the proposed amendment. I think it's an appropriate solution to a problem in our current multimodal plan, which is the bisecting of Boyer. But my fear is that if we amend it tonight, it will go back into the, the closet until August, when we resume negotiations with ITD. I'd like to prioritize the, and I, I'd request that, that you direct staff to look more closely at the multimodal plan. So that we don't forget about it for the next eight months and not see it again until, you know, we get an update on the conversations with the ITD about the curve. I think we've heard from people tonight and I also deeply agree that there are some flaws with the multimodal plan beyond the intersection with Boyer that we should be looking at. This solves one of them. But I would make a motion that we table the amendment to the multimodal plan and request that staff look more closely at some additional amendments to the multimodal plan in the area between Pine Street and Cedar Street and west of Boyer towards Ontario. Because from what I see, the multimodal plan as it sits to today presents a four to five lane proposal to the ITD. And if we're going into negotiations, I don't view that as a strong negotiating position. If our community's overwhelming desire is for traffic calming measures, possibly a three-lane solution. So that's the motion I'd like to move is that we table a, a decision on that until we've had a chance to look at some other additional amendments beyond just the realignment of Boyer.
Okay, I will pause. If we're going to table a motion, we have to table it to a specific date. So I'd refer to staff to provide insight as to what you think we can accommodate at the staff level.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a pointed clarification?
Yeah.
Is the request on the date to provide a update of possible additional revisions? Or is the request for us to have a more specific conversation about those revisions that you want to be requested? Does that make sense? Are we having a conversation about what is being requested?
Yes.
That's a great question. It, it sounds like maybe what would be most appropriate is to put this to a work, back to a workshop.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay. So could we table this to a workshop at some point that, and, and where we could discuss different options and elements?
That seems reasonable to me.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a comment that I appreciated the member of the public that said to maybe be more inclusive of what's going to happen within that Granary District, if we're going to table this and look at bigger options. So I would like to see that be a part of, from basically dubs through that Granary District as a more specific, refined look at what we will see.
Okay, so ultimately, you know, I think that's between you and Jennifer to figure out what, what you think can work with your team. Can you throw us a number to, can you throw us a date?
I don't think we're in a position to have a date on a workshop, because we need to consult with the other team members, such as Preston and, and other folks on our team. But I think that we could certainly see.
So Andy, do we, can, can we give some flexibility on the, forward to a specific date?
Well, I think the first thing you ought to do is move to table this particular item. And then if you want to instruct the staff to look into other items that are part of the multimodal transportation plan, you can certainly do so. But I think from a procedural standpoint, let's table this motion and then move forward.
I will give the second for Mr. Welker then.
Here it, but we still need to table it to a specific date.
But if you don't know a date, I think you need to have council or the staff come back and tell you when they can provide that information.
Okay. If, if we're good legally, then I'm, I'm certainly happy with that. Okay, okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? On, and this is a motion to table until a future date that will be determined after staff has a chance to review and, and figure out when we can fit that into the schedule. So it's been moved and seconded. This will be real call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Okay, item is tabled and we will certainly have a response for you certainly by February fifteenth at our next meeting. You take five, about done. You need, okay, we're going to take a three-minute break, Counselor Dick. Okay, the final item on the agenda this evening is consideration for the city's lease of War Memorial Field to the festival at Sandpoint for their twenty twenty-three concert series. Does council have any questions on this item? Pretty straightforward. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment in this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the festival at Sandpoint lease of War Memorial Field. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes and. Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.